This is the February 5th, 2025 meeting of the Krishna Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. Our first item of business today is the secretary's report from December 12. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions about those minutes? Nobody? Okay, we just need a motion.
Motion approved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the budget.
Before we start with the budget talk for this year, for FY25, I just want to make a clarification on the budget report that I've been submitting every month. So I received the encumbrance forms from Town Hall, and the most recent one actually has the amounts that was budgeted for FY25. There is just a minor number correction. So in library technicians line, the number is $92,773, which is up $617. And then in the material line, which is down $617, it's $20,383. So the bottom line number that was appropriated is still the same. It was just, I don't know where the confusion was, but I wasn't aware of it until the encumbrance actually had the actual numbers for the budget for each line. With that being said, we can go into what was spent for the past two months. So I received the energy bill for December, which is $1309, which is about right for this time of year. I'm expecting January's bill to also be similar because it's been very cold. So it actually might be a little bit up from December. But we are doing pretty well in terms of, we're only at 31% spent for the energy line, and we still have two more cold months, so to say. In the building and grounds line, we had our yearly inspections of the fire extinguishers. So Southern Eastern Fire Safety came in, inspected our six extinguishers, and that was $96 that was sent to them. And then I'll get more into this, but we also had, so Beacon Hardware is going out of business, which is unfortunate. And we are having some minor painting work that was similarly done in the summer. So I gave permission to Matt and Brady to go and purchase some materials because it's on sale before they go out of business. Yes, so I'll explain why. It's just paint and supplies. So that was $278.39 that was taken out of Building and Grounds line. Another thing that I purchased for the library for Rick was a vacuum. Our vacuum broke. So the vacuums we had, I don't know how to describe it to you. It's a long hose, a little box like this. It's not like a push vacuum that you use at home. And they're not really functional in the space for a big floor. They're functional for like corners because it's a long hose. So I purchased a regular Hoover Vac, a commercial-sized Hoover Vac, and Rick has been using it. I used it to make sure that it was doing its job correctly, and it's working quite well for us. So the vacuum, I split between office equipment and Building and Grounds. So I don't have a total here, unfortunately.
Excuse me, Elizabeth, was the lawn hose part of a central vacuum system?
No, no, no. It's a portable, it looks like an old camera.
Oh, okay, a shop car. A shop vac, okay.
No, no, it's not a shop vac. No, it's like the size of this. And then a long hose comes out, yes.
Oh, okay.
And it broke. Actually, it two, both broke. It was the other, about a year ago, Dave split the wire, put a new adapter, and then it also broke again. So I think it's just, it's a long hose. We have so much floor space here. I think it's better to just have a handheld.
I apologize for interrupting.
No, no, no.
You want to come buy vacuum anytime.
We have one on each floor. And I know how to use it.
So I split, we had money for it, so, sorry. I split it with office supplies and equipment. So that, and it's been a month, so it's doing quite well. Rick is using it, and he's pleased with it. Our next item here would be the telephone. So I've received two months already, very similar. So they range between $11 and $13 for AT&amp;T and Verizon. So we are seeing a trend. It's fair. And, you know, I can say comfortably for two months now that that's hopefully going to continue to be like that. The other thing is our materials line. So we are at 84% spent right now. I have been ordering, because I don't want to have a repeat of last year where I was struggling to make the 16% spent on materials. So I've been ordering through Ingram for our physical books. Unfortunately, Ingram has been backed up for whatever reason. So I am still receiving materials from October. So this line will be spent out sooner rather than later, which I'm okay with. And then another thing that was taken out recently, I submitted a $3,000 credit to Overdrive to purchase books for Libby and audiobooks for Libby because there's a lot of usage in our EV sources so that there are shorter waits for our patrons. So that's why that number is really high, but that's okay. And when that gets used, for example, I'm going to submit credit to Hoopla because Hoopla, once again, we had the highest month. I saw it on the market, but it's fine, and I'm going to use state aid for that because that's, you know, I can use it for that. And I'm going to use it once again for other items come before the end of the fiscal year. And I think that's it for the budget. So we're at 59% spent for everything. And March will be the last quarter, so I think we still have a few more weeks left in February, or, yes. So I believe we are in good standing where we are right now. You know, salaries are tight. I am paying attention to that. And we'll see where we go in the coming months before summer, if I'm able to have a staff meeting. But I'd rather have a push in there for emergencies, but I'll keep you posted on that. Any questions about the budget?
No. Anybody have any questions? All right, then we need a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
And then before we jump into maintenance, I would just talk about the statistics. So I gave you January's, which just came out. So just some highlights here compared to last year. Our physical DVD circulation has gone up, and that's due to part of me buying more DVDs, even if it's TV shows or movies. So I feel that people are coming to borrow, not to the terms of where they were before COVID, but they are coming to physically borrow DVDs. E-audio, e-magazines compared to last year are high. Even our museum passes, last year we had three go-out in January. This year, this month, or last month, we had six go-out. So even though, you know, holidays, people are recovering from holidays, you know, circulation, I feel, is increasing, and even the number of people. So in FY24, there was roughly 1,899 patrons in the building. And then in FY25, 2,022 people roughly were here. This is interesting. I don't know what happened in January, but our highest circ days, aside from the day after the holiday, which is New Year's, we had 200 circulation transactions at the desk, have been on Saturdays. And we were only open five hours on Saturday. So it is mind-blowing to see that in those five hours, we had 173 checkouts on one Saturday, and then the following Saturday, 167. So Saturdays are picking up.
Was that December or January?
That was January. Yeah, so I don't know if people are just hooked up and they want to go out and do things, and the weather hasn't always been great on Saturdays, but there's something about Saturdays at the library. You know? Yes. So I just wanted to point that out. And if it continues, I will have to maybe shift schedules or figure something out. I mean, we have coverage, but, you know, there's always some improvement to have better coverage. And we also have programs on Saturday too, so that could also be it, but.
That's what I was saying, December.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I didn't read December, but January, we had, and I would come in on Monday. Oh, Saturday was so busy. I'm like, really? And then I've been here for a few Saturdays for other reasons, and it is busy. And I would come in, and the whole parking lot is not whole, but there's a ton of cars in here.
That's great.
It is. It is. I'm glad people are coming in on the weekend.
Can you send that January one out if you don't mind?
Yeah.
I have December, but I don't have February.
I didn't. Oh, I'm sorry.
I only have December. No, that's okay. Can you just send that out?
Yes, I can. I printed, so I printed the wrong one.
No, that's all right.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Just email it out when you, no problem.
I'm going to write that down.
Yeah. That'd be great. That way I'll have it.
Yes.
We'll all have it.
Okay.
We have, next is old business, building maintenance.
So there's been a few, and this is not, I didn't put it under new business because I feel the building is always old business, always going to happen. So, and it's nothing I haven't discussed here before. So Matt and Brady came in in December, explaining to me that they're having a student from Old Colony come in and that if I had any little projects for them. So I showed them a lot of the items that have been on the task list. So for example, the painting, so on the staff side, very minor to us because no one's coming in that door except for staff. The baseboard of the stairs, it's all doped and stuff. So painting was an item that I brought out. The other item that Matt noticed was that on our gutter on the deck side, the snow was melting and it was dripping over. So he said he was going to go up there when the weather was better, nicer, to see if it's clogged. And I don't know if that's something he was going to do with the student. And then I talked about the painting on the outside, but you can't paint right now. So, but he's aware of the window sills, especially on this side. I don't know, all of a sudden, the paint is all gone. So he's aware of it. There was also.
That's a lot.
There was also another minor project in the library. So on the weekend, I had an email that one of the shelves broke in the children's room. So staff removed the items from the shelf, so nothing was on it. So, you know, no harm could come of it. And then I let Rick know he fixed it. And then Matt was in here again with Brady, and I showed him it. And they're like, oh, we could put a piece of wood under it and, you know, do all the things instead of having a piece of tape on it. So he came in, made it, so now it can't move, but it's secure. That's not going anywhere. So that was fixed. And then two days ago, I had an email from a staff member that a patron noticed that the car chargers outside were damaged and melted. So, yes, so. I went back in the trustees' meeting from 2019 when they were installed. I was a part-time, so I remember the email of saying, hey, don't be alarmed. EverSource will be here to install those items. Anyway, so Matt was here with Brady yesterday, and they discovered that the box on the outside, the cover was lifted, and inside was melted. So either water got in, somebody was fooling around with it. We're not electricians. He's not an electrician, so they don't know. So they closed it, and then the other side, so there's two charges. So the other side was off, and he fixed it. And then he said, can you get permission from the trustees to remove it? I said, this project has had enough. And I knew because of being part-time, I mean, they don't know the exact details, but I did go back in the meeting minutes, and I'm like, this project was done through a grant that Jim got through, I don't remember where, if it was EverSource or some other place. And they were just put onto library's property without even DINA being notified of this grant being done. So they've been there, and the other question was, don't you pay the bills? I'm like, no. I'm almost positive that I don't pay the bills. I pay the EverSource bill for this building. And the amounts, I mean, that item has been, since last year, it's been, it was getting used. Nothing has increased drastically or anything. So unless it's cents, like it's a couple of dollars for that, but I'm almost positive that I'm not paying for that. So I don't know where it's coming from. So I let, I told Matt he went to the town administrator to ask, and I haven't heard back yet. The only thing I can say in my email, not my emails, but in the library minutes and the videos on YouTube, that the way it was connected was just plugged into the poles out there. So I don't know. I don't know how, there's a meter. I don't know. I don't know. But that being said, it's not our responsibility. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, you know?
Is it your perception that it's owned by EverSource or by the town?
I want to say, I can't, I want to say it was, wasn't it a grant?
It's a grant.
That that's how they got there in the first place? And then I think, like, the library was going to have nothing to do with it. Like, they were, they needed one, like, on this side of town. They have, you know, others.
Initially, they were going to put one in the handicap spot. And they were like, no, we're not free.
Right, so they put it over there, and it was a grant, but. I don't think it's come up since then.
No, and it's kind of been there.
Doesn't that function like a telephone booth, like years ago? And then you pay to use it?
They don't pay. So we don't, I don't, nobody here has electric.
I thought you had to use it.
No, I was told that. You just, I can download the app, but I can't do anything else because I don't have electrical. That is free.
It couldn't be free. Maybe you pay for the app.
Yeah, you probably do.
I was told that it was free.
If the vehicle were free, we'd have cars lined up from here.
Including yours and mine.
I mean. I thought they would all set up for some kind of a charge card that you have to.
There is like an app. If you go there, you can download it. But I, I'm just going by what I was told. And no one has been using it for this month. So I would go out there and say, hey. And sometimes people just leave the car there and take off, so I can't talk to anyone. But, but, you know, because there's an issue where no one is checking it. You know, it's not our responsibility.
So it's not functioning.
We wouldn't know. And, you know, I'm grateful that Matt was here and Brady, but now they have to call the town electrician to see if they can fix the box out there. But, you know, I told him, I'm like, I don't pay the electric bill for this. I don't know, I don't know why this is floating in my head, but I don't know if with that grant for installing it, there's also a grant to pay for the bill. I don't, that's just.
No, they have those at Town Hall.
They have it elsewhere, yes.
So they're using it. Someone knows the answer to this question.
Cardiways and the COA.
And they must use them constantly. So they know how that works.
EverSource?
Right.
I think, I mean.
I'm thinking it may belong to EverSource. They generate income.
That's what I think too.
Worth just being proactive and somehow notifying EverSource and saying, hey, there's a problem.
Yeah.
I'll leave here, right?
See how they react?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would call EverSource.
And probably you have to have an app to use it.
You do. You do.
So you get charged through the app.
Yeah. I would call EverSource.
That's free.
Yeah.
It's free.
It's free?
I just heard it on the radio. That's one of the things, everybody who has an electric car, everybody pays for their gassing up. I don't know how, but it was on the radio.
Wow. Interesting, George. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, but I just wanted you guys to be aware of that with the car charger. And then one last thing, major props to Matt for snow removal. So the light snowstorms that we had on January 11th, January 20th, and February 3rd, which was this Monday, I had notifications from staff members saying that the lot was plowed and salted, and the walkways were also shoveled and salted. And also during, on Monday, Rick shoveled and salted. So major credit to having the library in your thoughts when it's snowing. So I don't know about tomorrow. You know, the weather's all over the place. But I appreciate that there's an effort to have this place ready to go when we open. And I think we've made a lot of progress with the snow.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Deeply appreciated.
And, oh, and so the painting, so the student is starting on February 10th. But I don't know if that means in here or just in town because of the shop schedule. So it will be, hopefully, next week. I'll have more information about that. But the touch-ups of the paint will be, it'll look really nice. All right. And then any questions about the building? Is that my question?
No, I think we're, I think that's good. Anybody else have any questions? I think you're doing a good job keeping it, keeping it up to snuff. That's good. Might as well try to prevent whatever we can from.
Yes.
Breaking or. All right, we have, now we'll have an update on the FY26 budget.
So our last meeting was December 12th. On December 13th, I met with the town administrator to present the budget I proposed to us at that meeting. I'm happy to say that our numbers were very similar. There was only a few adjustments. I think the biggest adjustments were the salaries for the techs because they're in contract, the contract is ending. I was going in, doing it at 3%, and I was told that it's going to be 2%. So I got, so what you have in front of you is what is present. So I don't know if you want the old number or just leave it as it is right now. So it only went, it went down roughly $2,000. So it'd be $94,700 for the techs. And the same thing for the tech three position, our numbers just went slightly down. So it would be 3,073,351 for the library tech. So they were at, it was at 8%, and now it's down to 4%. So what you see in front of you is what we agreed upon between the town administrator and myself. The energy line went up, so it's now $16,580. And then the telephone line, I proposed 750, and we agreed upon 725. So the budget I presented here last meeting was three, in total, 308527. And then today, what is presented to you is 307070. And then below that, you'll see the MAR for FY26, which is 303078. I also gave everyone two sheets of when I, so this is still a big question on when or if I'm going to present to the finance committee or the selectmen. They are meeting tonight, so hopefully I have more information. I do know that the last finance committee meeting, they assigned liaisons. They haven't reached out yet, but I know they're probably just waiting for this next meeting. But when I do, if I do present, I will hand out these two flyers in addition to a, it's a very quick, like, how many checkouts we did in a year, a statistic flyer, and it's fun. So, you know, I always have to make sure that we need MAR. This green flyer just explains MAR, and then the total that we need to be, or exceed. And then the other flyer that I'm doing also this year is the minimum standards. So this, on top of MAR, this is what else I have to, we have to have in order to acquire for state aid. So we have to be open to all residents of the Commonwealth, no charge for library services, be open a minimum hours of 40, 40 hours in five days, have a directive with an MLS, and hold certificate of professional librarianship. And then the big, also the big one for, on top of MAR, is 16% of appropriation must be spent on library materials, lend books and other materials to other libraries, and complete state aid and the annual survey every year. So the big one here is a 16%. Everything else, we know we do. And this will be, you know, when I do present, if I present, this will just be explained to them why it's important in addition to meeting MAR. We don't know what the future holds, and it's good to have this information handy because not a lot of people are aware of it.
No, they're not.
And, you know, there's a lot we have to keep track of or, you know, throughout the year. And we do a pretty good job, and the main two is the MAR and the 16% spent on materials. Let me see. So I think that's it for FY26. Any questions about the FY26 budget? Any clarifications? I know I fumbled on the numbers again.
You did fine. Alex did.
Thank you.
I'm glad that we were really close.
We were really close, you know, and I went in with the salaries blindly because I don't know.
Exactly, yes.
You know, it was very close, and we'll see what happens now. I know they're still talking, and hopefully tonight I'll have a little bit more information on if I'm presenting, when or when I'm presenting.
Elizabeth, those two flyers are great.
Thank you.
They're a nice layout and visually really terrific. Yeah, I'm very glad to stand.
My explanation points don't scare people.
No. It actually lays out the logic of it.
Yes, thank you. And then, you know, I could put the MAR together, but this is very, 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 very important. And everything else is, you know, so.
Well, the minimum standards too, when you take a look at it, it runs down through. You go, hey, this is what you got to do to stay open.
Yes.
And to participate. This is great.
And then you can just go check, 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 check.
Yeah.
Yep. And then I always discuss what happens if we, if we don't get certified.
Right.
And that's how, and maybe I should make a flyer for that.
Nobody, nobody wants to do that.
We should put that in red.
Yes.
No.
That, why this is bad.
We're not going there.
I took that.
Stop. This is what we don't want to do.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Yeah, very good.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on the FY26 budget as presented? Do we need a motion?
I approve that.
Right here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Great job. Okay, now we have new business, a donation from the Jake Fabian Memorial Fund.
Jean Fabian reached out to us. She was a user, or is a user of this library with her son, who unfortunately passed away at a very young age. She wanted to donate money through the memorial fund for Jake Fabian. And this is done to South Coast Community Foundation. So we received a grant for $500 to be used to support children's programming. I'm asking the trustees. Um, I am asking the trustees to, um, hopefully accept this. Um, and if, upon accepting, um, I will reach out to Jean for, to discuss what she would like to do, what type of programming, um, we wanna do something that would honor Jake, uh, maybe his interests. So we're open book here, and when I get more information on that, I will let you all know. So, that's it.
That's good. Well, thank you very much, and that's fantastic for thinking about us here at the library.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, if.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
All right.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you again, Jean and Fabian family, for, for your donation to the, to the library for the children's programming.
Absolutely.
Now we have director's report.
Yay. Um, so December was short, I was out, uh, for a bit for recovery and, um, between the holidays. So, um, I just wanna highlight some items, mostly children's items. So in the children's room, if you happen to go in there, we have a new addition, a little puzzle table that the little ones can do. And then I also have a marble rug, which I got off of a freebie list, and it's being used, it sits in a rubber made bin, and students, ah, students. And kids are using it to get creative with it, and, you know, they're, sometimes I see it, they're walking around with it. Um, and then the Friends group, um, funded two big craft programs before the holidays. So the icicle craft and the New Year's Eve craft were both well-received, and snacks are provided, um, from the Friends. Um, and then in January, our community room, I will say, has been hopping. So we now have a regular Girl Scout group, Brownies, who meet twice a month in here. Uh, our D and G group is also, that, that, they've been in here, uh, using this room for a while. And then we've also had Serphead. So if you're aware, the town of Akushnet is doing their master plan. So Serphead, um, came in during one storytime to discuss or get, gather ideas about, um, what people want in Akushnet for the, for the new master plan. And then last week, they held a master plan info session in this room, where they were all here to discuss, um, what people want going forward. So they, we've been working with them, um, to reach out to the community, and, and that we've decide, or not decided, but we are planning, um, right now, we're doing, uh, through Neighborhood Forest. Uh, if you're a student in Akushnet, um, no, actually, no, you don't have to be a student. If you're, if you have a child who, you wanna plant a tree, you can get a free tree through this, through Neighborhood Forest. You fill out a form, and then what happens is Neighborhood Forest ships us the trees, and then we distribute them. It's up to us how we distribute them. So we're thinking a little program, drop-in, come grab your tree. And then we mentioned this to Serphead, Serphead, um, thought about doing a seed bomb, which is paper mushed up, like to be mushed, and then you put seeds in it, and then you kinda just throw it in the garden. So it's a good way to get involved. So during the, the picking up of trees, Serphead could be here because we know we will have a good amount of people. So we're planning on something like that, um, and this would be in April. And then, uh, in May, I know I'm talking about May, but, uh, in May, Ford Cor, Ford Middle School Chorus will also be here, and I'm like, well, this is a good opportunity for Serphead to come in because we know those are students from Akushnet. So their parents, guardians will be here, um, so hopefully Serphead will be, um, joining us that night. Um, I will be meeting with Serphead next Thursday, um, for another meeting regarding, um, the master plan. I think it's, the topic is transportation, um, and building maintenance. So I'll get more information when I attend that meeting next week. Um, uh, Serphead, I'm gonna talk about Serphead. The other thing, uh, that I actually did mute this month is, you know, we have the library calendars. I, uh, actually left them at town hall. So I asked the collector's office if I could leave calendars there, and they said yes. So I thought I'd send them up our calendars there, and, yeah, I thought that was, I, I don't know why I never thought of that, but.
That's a good idea.
That's a very good idea.
No, but I should bring it over there too. Yeah. I can get you some.
That's a good idea.
I know, I don't know what I'm. Uh, children's room, so Lori hosted three new book clubs, so it's for different age groups. Um, it's, we're trying this out for three months to see how it, uh, goes. Um, so far, the twins book club, we had two participants. Um, so Lori also sent those news, uh, the program flyers to the school. They were sent, I believe, in their email blast that they have there.
Newsletter, yeah.
Um, and then, excuse me, I'm sorry. And then, um, the library last two weeks ago hosted BuildWave, which was sponsored by the Friends. So this BuildWave is a company that came in, set up a, the, the projector, they have a screen, very interactive, and what happened was groups of tables got, each got a box, and then you just built something. No, no plan, you just, free for all, you just build something, you're on a timer, they go around, take pitches. They had a lot of fun, and then the pitches end up on the screen then. So it was a lot of fun, and they seemed to enjoy it. Um, I've already booked four programs for the summer reading concert, uh, summer reading, for summer reading. Um, in our summer reading concert, we're doing eight weeks, and we have seven booked already. So we're staying on one, yes. Yeah, it's already done. Um, another thing that happened in January was we held a membership meeting in here. So sales membership meeting happens every other month, uh, every other month. And I offered our space, oh God, it was way back in the fall, because, um, it was supposed to be at Weirham, Weirham had a situation, uh, where there was.
Flooded.
Flooded mold. So I offered our building for it. So we had about, uh, I think it was 17 library directors in here, on top of the board members for sales. Uh, they had the meeting, and then, um, about, you know, and they might have been here before, but not since I've been here. So it was a good way to network, show people the building. And then afterwards, they, um, there was recommendations of where to, they wanted to have an informal directors lunch. So we went to Blue Point.
Nice.
And, um, it was nice to interact and meet people that I usually just talk to email over the phone, or I just see their names. Um, so that was, uh, that was nice, and, um, I hope to, now, I, sometimes the meetings I can't attend because of scheduling, or just the time is off, so it was nice to have it in here and actually participate. Um, hmm, one more, uh, what else? So, uh, I, the town, uh, town administrator reached out that there's training for OSHA for.
Right.
So, uh, February 25th, he'll be attending in OSHA training. I don't know where it is in town, um, but I think that's important to have, um, uh, do. So when I get more information on where it is, I will let you know. And what does join those training? Um, Serphead, ba, 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 ba. So I had someone, uh, what, they wanted the library minutes. So she's like, it's not online. I'm like, what do you mean it's not online? So I wasn't aware that I had to submit them to the town clerk. So.
Sounds like I'm mocking self-identity.
So, hey, uh, which, or Nancy, I forgot which one. I submitted 2,000, uh, FY23 minutes, she had, put them all up. And then last week, I waited to put all around the minutes up. So it's all, it should be all there now, but I promise going forward, I will have those minutes online for those who need to look at it. Um, I apologize.
Elizabeth, you can only do what you know. Somebody goes and tell you, oh gee, this needs to be done.
And I would give a lunch for them because I have my own, our own minutes, so I wouldn't go.
Somebody, you know, not a trustee, they wanted to, do you see what was going on?
Right.
What was discussed, so, um, and I'm like, wait, what? So I went ahead and submitted it all, and I have it all, so it takes me two seconds to do. But I can't imagine on the backend of uploading it all, putting it on the website, make sure it looks nice. So, but I promise that going forward, um, I will do that anytime in there. Um, and that's it, or for the director's report. I do wanna discuss upcoming items because even though February is a short month, we have a lot of things going on here. So Sandra has started a Lego club for adults. So we have four dates.
I'm sorry, what?
Lego club for adults.
Oh, cool.
Yes.
So you probably have to pick up your own Legos, is that what that means?
Yes. So the bins are, it's very similar.
You're right.
It's, it's still, it's still a work in progress. I feel like there should be like an item, then you try to create it.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's still a work in progress. So we have four dates on February, just to see if, they're different times. So yesterday we had one, the next one is Thursday, uh, the 13th at 11:00. And then we have one on Wednesday, the 19th at 6:00. And then Monday, the 24th at 6:00. So we're trying to figure this out, um, getting fear, because we've had adults say, I wanna do that. Well, now is your chance to come in, and it's very informal, bring food, bring a drink, you know? Have some fun, just relax. Um, coming up this Friday, I, I don't see this advertised anywhere, but EverSource reached out to me, and they wanted to have a space to discuss their 401 Akushnet to Follow River Extension Program. So they're gonna be in here on Friday, uh, February 7th from 1:00 to 4:00. I don't, there's a flyer on the door, um, but it seems to be really important, uh, for Akushnet residents. Um, this Saturday, the 8th, we have a, uh, Lori's doing a drop-in Valentine's craft, and they're creating, uh, Valentine's Day cards. Um, Pace is back in the building, uh, Pace has been a little, uh, has been absent from having, uh, their Mindful Melodies. Uh, they're, they will be here, uh, on Tuesdays this month, uh, February 11th and February 25th at 10:30. Um, on Saturday, uh, February 15th at 12:00, we have the Mass Audubon coming in to present Intro to Birding. So they have, we're hoping to maybe make this a series, but they're doing an Intro to Birding program here at the library, and this will be sponsored by the Friends. Um, and hopefully, the, the, the goal here is to have other lectures, and they also do off-site visits. So the sawmill might be a good place to do some bird watching, even our own backyard here. You, we see so many birds that I have no clue what they are. But it's, uh, I'm excited for them to, to, to come here. Um, we are trying in, I know in the past, few years ago, before COVID, we used to have chess. Uh, but we're doing a drop-in chess pro, program, which is very informal, we have chess sets. So if you wanna come in and just partner with someone, you can do that. Um, so we're, we're trying that out. Lori's doing another sewing session on Saturday, February 22nd at 12:30. And I believe they're creating little, um, something small, a little small craft. But it's always good if you're a beginner, if you wanna learn, um, these sewing sessions are perfect. Um, and if you're advanced, you could come in and make 12 of whatever they make. So it's hand sewing, we don't have machines here. So that's it for February, um, our highlights for February.
There's sounds like a lot.
There is a lot, so it's a short month, but we're noticing that, you know, people are coming back in, you know, holidays are over, things are picking up, and it only goes up from here. Uh, you know, the summer, it's, you know, there's a lot. So any questions about what's coming up?
I don't think so, I think you've got a lot going on.
We do, yes. There's a lot.
All right, now let's see if we can set the next meeting. Um, Wednesday, March 12th at 12:30, or is 1 o'clock better?
I can do 1 o'clock.
Is earlier better or later better, or that day's not good at all?
Um, I have an appointment at 1:00.
Okay.
So.
Do we wanna do, um, 11:30?
Sure.
11:30, I could.
Can everyone do 11:30?
Okay.
Yeah, that's the penalty.
So it's the 12th?
12.
Does that work for you on the 12th?
Yeah, 12.
So that.
11:30?
Yep, March 12th at 11:30, does that work for you?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yeah.
So everyone's good? Okay, so we will do, uh, next meeting is Wednesday, March 12th at 11:30. And does anyone have any other, anything else to discuss? Questions, comments, concerns? No? Okay. Then if there's no other business.
Motion to adjourn?
Right here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This February 5th, 2025, meeting of the Akushnet Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned.